Yep, I'm good. I could see you and hear you.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I would like to start the June 24th, 2020 East Whiteland Township Planning Commission meeting. It's obviously been, what, four or five months since we've met? And this is our first Zoom meeting, so hopefully everything goes as planned and we can have a good meeting. Anyway, so how about we stand and do the pledge? I think Mike has a flag somewhere. Maybe.
He's just trying to see if everybody's wearing pants.
Pledge allegiance to the Father. Thank you. Okay, so we have five Planning Commission members, I believe. At the moment, we have, let's see, Peter Fixler, John Lommer, Todd Azusa, myself, and Jeff Broadbent. Our first item on the agenda would be to approve the February meeting minutes. That was the last meeting we had, February 26, 2020.
Wow.
Does anybody have any changes or anything to note on the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Peter?
I'll make a motion to approve the February Planning Commission meeting minutes.
Do you have a second?
I will, Jeff.
Second by Jeff. Thank you. Motion carries.
Did we even vote? It was, a motion was made, the motion was seconded, but we didn't vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Thanks, Todd.
In general, should we do this verbally then for voting?
That's fine.
Yeah, all right.
Raise your hand.
There's a raise hand button is why I asked. I didn't know what your, the propriety is.
Actually, that's a good point. Maybe we should, when we vote, everybody raise their hand so we know yea or nay. How's that?
All right, we'll do that.
Okay, so the first item that's on our agenda, we're just going to switch it up a little bit here. We're going to head down to number four, to the sewage facility planning. That's a very quick topic, so we'll bring forget who's here to talk about that.
I am Chuck Faulkner.
Hi, Chuck.
Okay, thank you. And I'll try to be brief. I'm Chuck Faulkner with Pinoni Associates. We are the township wastewater engineer. And the reason we'll be here before you tonight is for the existing Malvern Hunt wastewater treatment plant. The township would like to decommission the plant, okay? That requires some permitting from DEP, specifically a special study, which is basically a modified planning module submission. That also requires a number of reviews, particularly from obviously the Township Planning Commission and County Planning Commission and some other entities. Briefly, let me explain what the decommissioning will, what the existing plant is and what the decommissioning will encompass. As I'm sure all of you know, Malvern Hunt has been there for probably 30 years. It's one of, I imagine was one of the earlier developments in the township. Sewage-wise, it consists of a pump station, which is in the development itself. That pumps over to a couple of lagoons on the south side of Sweetsford Road. There's specifically, there's two lagoons. There's one collection lagoon, I guess you could say, and then another treatment lagoon there. Those lagoons ultimately store, they're aerated, and then eventually what happens is that that sewage is taken from those lagoons to pumped back up through the development to the spray fields on the north side of Malvern Hunt, where it's sprayed during, all year round, but primarily during the spring and summer months when the ground is not frozen. So what the decommissioning would, would, and very nice, Zach, what the decommissioning would do would be to take all those flows that are directed towards that treatment facility now and divert them to the existing public sewer, which is in the Chester Valley Trail adjacent to the property. Then what would happen is the lagoons would be de-watered. That would involve basically spraying the rest of that effluent to the point that it can be sprayed, and then removing or de-watering the remainder and hauling that off site and doing some, some removal of the remaining grit and sludge that might be in the bottom and leaving the lagoons as they would, as is right now. So like I said, the permitting process for this requires the Planning Commission to basically review the zoning and land development aspects of that and fill out what's called a component foray, which I believe is included in your packet there. I took the liberty of filling those questions out, marking those questions, and Zach has it right there. And I believe everything is correct, but if the members of Planning Commission have any questions or any concerns or anything, I'd be happy to answer them right now. Otherwise, we would ask that if you concur with everything, you vote to approve that and sign off on the component foray, which would be submitted to the DEP as part of the package.
Hey Chuck. Does the decommissioning permission from DEP also include the approval of a gravity line into the existing system?
It's, right, it's actually a force main. We're simply extending the force main, but you're correct, Joe. It is simply a connection into the existing system.
Chuck, does the permitting also decommission the pump station?
The pump station onsite is for the collection and of the sewage. It does not decommission that pump station that is still needed, and the force main is part of that station, which gets redirected into the public sewer. So without the pump station, that facility would have no sewer, so we do need that.
Okay.
It says on the map, John, here, it says on the map that you displayed that the force main is abandoned in place, so it struck me as wrong.
I apologize. There's, let me backtrack and explain. There's two force mains related to this system right now. One, if you look, thank you, Zach, if you look at the blue one, that is a standard sewage pumping station, which collects sewage from the development, from those 279 homes in Malvern Hunt. That is pumped over the lagoons. The red one is an effluent force main, which is taking the sewage out of those lagoons. It's combined with chlorine and disinfectant, and then it's distributed all the way up to the spray fields and sprayed. So that's how that effluent is, gets to the spray fields and is disposed of.
What's the diameter of that tube?
That, I believe, is a 12-inch line.
Ooh, that's big. So what happens to the land where it's been getting sprayed? Is that just, who keeps that?
That is township-owned property right now and will remain township-owned property. There's sprayheads on there, on, in various aspects of that parcel. They'll be taken off and just abandoned in place. That red force main there will be cut up top, flushed, all the sewage will be removed, and that will be capped at either end and abandoned in place.
Yeah, how much acreage is the spray field? Looks like about seven or eight, maybe?
No, there's three separate areas that are about six and a half acres each, so I think that's somewhere around 18 to 20 acres, I want to say.
So the destiny of that is worth thinking about in the future, I guess.
Yeah, the township's going to keep the spray fields, but I want to make it clear, though, the ponds, the township's going to sell. When the ponds are decommissioned, they're selling that portion.
You know, I don't know anything about spray fields, but my guess is it's pretty saline in there. And, you know, it's not something you'd want to just build houses on, but it's an interesting question.
A spray field? I wouldn't think that there would be any problem with the spray field.
Yeah, they'll have the best lawn in the township.
Well, I just, I just didn't want it to disappear as an idea, so I'd like that to be reflected in the minutes.
Okay, and I don't know if all the commission members had a chance to review the foray and concur with it, or whether there's any questions on that also?
My only concern was the disposition of the spray field and the lagoon properties, and Joe cleared that up. So as long as Malvern Hunt doesn't get to develop with the same density of the current development, and it's township-owned, so that won't happen, so I'm happy with it.
John here, yes, I agree with that, Todd.
And one of the reasons why we're selling the lagoons is because there's environmental issues with them, and we have a developer that wants to buy them and clean it up environmentally, and they're of no use to us. So we're going to put them out to bid, and hopefully that developer will be the highest bidder.
I'm sure Malvern Hunt residents welcome the closing of the spray field back there because it does smell. It's back by the tennis court, correct? Anyway, I have no questions. Does anybody else have any questions?
Zach, can I see that document again? Can you scroll?
The actual questionnaire aspect or the map?
No, the one that's in front of us, the letter.
Yeah. So is that not showing at the moment?
I just can't see the section B, section C. I can't see what's above it.
Oh, okay.
It's also in your packet. It's the last item.
Okay, now I see it now. Thank you, Britt.
You're welcome.
I'm good.
You're good, Peter?
Yes.
Have we heard from everyone? Todd, Peter, John?
I'm fine with it. There really is no alternative, and I think we should approve it.
And Jeff?
Yeah, it's good with me. It looks like it's pretty well complete, all the paperwork and logistics.
So I'm assuming there's no way to take any other questions from anyone else? Is that correct?
I'm going to check briefly in the public comment email, just to make sure that nobody's.
We haven't gotten anything yet. I have that up. So we're doing good.
Okay, so what exactly do we need to do here? Anything?
A motion. It's just a motion that authorizes a planning commission and sign it.
Okay. Does somebody want to make that motion?
I'm glad to do it, but I don't know what I'm making a motion for. I make a motion to support the the decommission of Malvern Hunt wastewater treatment plant special study. Is that correct?
That's close enough.
All right, good enough. In the right words.
Is there a second?
Peter will second.
Peter will second. Motion approved. Thank you. All those in favor? I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for the thumbs up, Pete.
Thank you, everyone.
So as a logistics matter here in the cockpit of our planes, I see this questionnaire still up in front of me. How does that go away?
Zach has to take it away.
All right.
Yeah, because I can't see everybody on my screen. Yeah, there we go. Okay. All right, so now we're going to go back up to the top of the agenda, right? And we can welcome in H.P. Flanagan.
Hey, guys.
Which is the Bacton Way Final Subdivision Land Development Application for the Construction of Six New Single Family Detached Homes Utilizing a Cluster Development and Open Space Design Provisions. Each home will be served by individual driveways from the existing public street, on lots, stormwater management, and public sewer. The properties are located at the intersection of North Bacton Hill, Spring Valley, and Conestoga Roads, and are within the R1 residential district. Okay, who's here for?
With Commonwealth Engineers.
Harry Pettyjohn with H.P. Flanagan.
Hello.
Hi.
So we're here before you tonight. We're looking to get your recommendation to go to the board for final approval. We've gotten a couple of review letters. We've gone through them, responded. I did get Darrell's review today, tonight, which looked pretty clean. There's only a few items on there. Mostly agreements that need to be submitted to township or, and then executed. All the, all the response, or the review letters, we pretty much complied with everything, everything in them feel could be a condition to the approval if it hadn't been done yet. So unless there's any other questions, what we'd just like to have you do is have a motion to recommend us go to the board.
Having a hard time hearing him. Is anybody else?
It's a little difficult for me, too.
I can't hear him either.
Let's pick up, Mike.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Is that better?
I can hear you fine. It was Michael.
So what Mike was saying, we have all of our letters and we, there we go, and we've responded. And what we're looking for you guys is a recommendation, go to the board for approval. We've covered all the bases of everything. Mike, that's the short form, right?
Yes.
Have the waivers, have the waivers been approved or recommended for approval?
Not to my knowledge of yet.
Okay, so you would want the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the board for the waivers as well?
Yes, correct. Where is their list of waivers?
We don't, well, I don't have anything on this, do you? Does anybody? Other than, other than the Commonwealth Engineers documents?
Yeah, what we provided you with were the response letters. They submitted plans basically in the middle of last week with these response letters. So in the meantime, Darrell has reviewed and the landscape architect has reviewed. They both came back with fairly clean reviews, as they've said. Chris Williams' previous letter was fairly clean prior to their submission. It's really just a matter of sorting out their traffic impact fee. They're requesting a waiver from the widening along the frontage of their property due to some roadside constraints, and sort of in lieu of that, offering some extra right-of-way at the intersection of Bacton Hill Road and Conestoga. And what that would allow is a future intersection improvement. As we know, that kind of intersection has always been a little problematic. That was part of the Act 209 study. So in addition to receiving a traffic impact fee, they will be providing right-of-way in order to accommodate that future intersection improvement if there were to be a need for that, you know, if the school district were to build on their property, for example.
These are, these are the same issues the last time they were in front of us. They presented to us. Nothing has changed, correct?
Yeah, for the most part. I would say previously, they also went through their landscape plan. At that time, it wasn't real clear exactly how many trees were being removed. They've since redone their calculation. And so one of the waivers, I do actually have a waiver letter here that they provided here this afternoon. Would it be helpful if I just pulled that up and we could kind of run through those, just as a point?
Just for a refresher. It'd be nice.
So I'm going to zoom in here. Just bear with me for one moment. So I don't know, Mike, do you want me to run through these, or would you like to go through them?
I can, I can do it, as long as you guys can hear me a little bit. So the first one's just to get from providing the environmental impact study that land development required. Two is the traffic impact study. Also, we feel like the amount of traffic that's going to be associated with these, these houses isn't going to be very much. And I believe McMahon had also supported that waiver. One, the, in regards to the widening of Bacton Hill Road, we propose, or look for relief from doing the widening at this point. And we are providing additional right-of-way for future road improvements for that. And the third one is, or fourth one's the, no more removal of 20%, of the existing trees on the lots. If we look for relief on that, we are providing the required number of replacement trees if we do go above the point. So there. And then the last one is just the stormwater management. One, we're looking to provide a spillway of less than one foot. And I believe Darrell, you've kind of seen that one and are okay with that? Am I correcting that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for that.
Yeah, I'll just chime in on one or two things quickly. You'll see, there's a, there's a previous comment, and you may recall, this, this project is adjacent to the Ebenezer AME Cemetery on Bacton Hill Road. The app did go before the Historical Commission last week at their virtual Zoom meeting and received a positive recommendation. As part of that, they'll be repairing the fence around the perimeter of the cemetery, clearing, helping to clear some of the trees from the cemetery yard itself, but not within the actual confines of the structure, just due to liability. And they'll be maintaining that lawn area in the cemetery for the duration of their construction project. So those were sort of like the three conditions, I guess you'd say, that they agreed to with the Historical Commission.
Great.
The, the other one that was kind of outstanding, like I said, at the time of preliminary, was the tree clearing. I can pull up the landscape plan briefly. They do meet more or less maybe one shy of the actual number. I'll double check that. But they do, you'll see sort of around the perimeter here, I don't know if you can see on the screen, maybe I'll do a little annotate here. Bear with me one sec. These trees, more or less around the perimeter, are some of the, like what I'll say, is like the non-lot specific planting. There's about 80 of those trees. So we would need, we'll work with the landscape architect to determine the type of those trees, but those, that's kind of like the bulk of the replacement, I'll say. That wasn't really clear during preliminary, how many there were, where they would go and all of that, so.
Okay, so the replacement is covered, because, and even covering the extra 20% that's being cut down, which I understand. I was confused with the Commonwealth Engineers, Michael Cohen's letter. It just didn't seem like it was still an open-ended thing for the rest of the landscaping. I mean, you're even getting in so far as to talk about planting bushes around the dwellings. Do we feel we're complete now? Because I didn't, after I read this letter.
I may be able to clarify that a little bit. What I provided you was actually their response letter to the previous review letter. So previously, there was a, just more as a way of condensing, not getting a review letter and a response. So you can see the previous comments and their response on this sheet. There was previously some foundation plantings around the homes, and they were looking to take credit for their replacement numbers on that. Our landscape architect said, no, why don't you go ahead and plant the trees? The foundation plantings can be problematic down the road. And so they've since complied with that. If you see on here, they, there are no foundation plantings. Dave Kavanaugh has reviewed this plan and signed off as having complied with all of his previous comments. That also came through. Again, I apologize. This was resubmitted sort of at the middle of last week, so we didn't get a chance to get you back all
Right.
clean review letters.
Okay. All right, that's all, I'm satisfied with that, but I still wonder, now you're telling the builder not to landscape around the dwelling, and it's going to make it difficult for them to market that it's barren-looking. And then the homeowner's going to come in and plant whatever they want anyhow.
Right. We left that open to them to do that. When we start specifying trees as part of like replacement or shrubs of replacement, they're going to have to maintain those, and it's kind of hard to do that. So this way, those replacement trees are not associated with the buildings, and they can, they can do the landscaping as they, as they want, and they'll be above and beyond.
Right, yeah. Okay, that's fine. I just thought that was, I understand not counting, especially if it were a shrub, as if it were a tree that you're replacing in the equation. It just seemed weird that Kavanaugh, I guess, went further, you must have been reacting to it, that the recommendations, don't plant anything around the building because it's bad for the foundation, and I just found that interesting.
I think that comment was more just for them to not take credit for it on the replacement. There would be nothing to prohibit them from planting. I think most builders would put something around, but at least they wouldn't be tied to the land development plan and therefore unable to be removed without, you know, creating.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay.
Yeah, Zach.
Are there any other questions about this? Man?
No.
So this is a preliminary final?
This is actually just a final. They received preliminary approval last year and have since been working with Conservation District to obtain their NPDS permit, which they have. So once they have their final approval, they're, they're pretty much good to go, aside from some of the administrative items on the backend of their approval.
Okay. Is there somebody who would like to make a recommendation for the final approval for this?
I can make a recommendation.
I can't see anybody. I mean, I can see some, but.
I can make a recommendation, Peter here? Make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to approve the H.P. Flanagan Bacton Way Final Subdivision Development, Land Development Application for the Construction of Six New Single Family Homes with the condition of the waivers being fulfilled. Is that correct?
Yeah, we just had compliance with the review letters as a standard catch-all as well.
With the compliance of the standard of the review letters.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Jeff Broadbent, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Wave with an aye. Todd, I guess we need Todd to speak up because he's not here.
Opposed, nay. For the same reasons that I've rejected this project, I don't like the fact that they're, the driveways are onto the street, and I don't like that we're clustering homes across the street or combining two lots that weren't lots and considering them continuous.
Okay, so in this case, am I a tiebreaker here? Because we only have five, we have five, right? Five Tods and a. So that's three, three yeses and one no. Is that still considered a majority? Because it's not a quorum.
What happened to John?
I'm here, but.
John, what did John say?
I said yes, aye.
So we have, we have a majority.
Okay.
The quorum president is a majority of the quorum.
Motion carries.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks.
Okay, the next applicant would be the Seventeenth Spring Road, Ryan Reese. Preliminary slash final subdivision application to divide an existing seventy four thousand square foot parcel into two lots. The existing single family home and other improvements are intended to remain on Lot One. New, a new single family home driveway and stormwater management facilities will be constructed on Lot Two. The application proposes to connect both lots to public sewer. This project is associated with CU dash zero six dash twenty twenty. The property is located at Seventeenth Spring Road and is within the R three residential district. Hello?
Ryan Reese.
Who's here for Spring Road?
I'm here.
I'm Jack.
Yep. Ryan's here listening in case, in case we, you know, we have any questions for him, but Ryan is the owner of the property. He lives at that existing house that you see in the front, and he would like to subdivide it. As you said before, this is about, it's almost one point seven acres, and the zoning is point four acre zoning. It's seventeen thousand square feet, which is like point four acres. So he can almost get three lots perhaps if he wanted, but it might be difficult. So two is very straightforward, and the idea here is for him to main, he's going to maintain the existing house and perhaps rent it. And he's building the new house for himself. And actually, as an aside, it appears at this point, Jim Renahan is the builder. So you're, I think those of you are familiar with with Renahan's work. They're actually the folks that brought us this plan and brought us Mr. Reese. Initially, we started out with this being a septic system because the existing house is a septic system. But then we found out that there is a sewer behind the property. So we are going to connect actually both lots to the public sewer, which is certainly a benefit. And we've been through that with Bill Steele. Bill actually helped me find the plans initially. And actually, as of today, we we heard from Mr. McGory, who said we ought to get a letter from there is, I guess, let me back up, there's something called Lover's Lane, if you can see in the upper part of the plan.
Yep.
That's, it's kind of odd. That actually is owned by the neighbor to the right, Mr. Cavada. He, he, his, Mr. Cavada's land surrounds this property. It's kind of strange. But the reason is, is because it's a thirty three foot right of way that he dedicated years ago for this Lover's Lane. It was never ever built or or taken, the township had a dedication of it. So we were at a question of whether we can put a sewer through it because it's really not dedicated, and Mr. McGory said we ought to get an easement. So we actually, I actually drafted a letter this afternoon, and Mr. Cavada actually already signed it to permit us getting through his property for that easement.
Yeah, but you, you need an actual easement that he can record.
Yes. Absolutely. I I just wanted for tonight to be able to, for our folks to see that we, that was something that Zach had suggested. So just so you know that Mr. Cavada is cooperative for an easement. We got a letter. Matter of fact, his son Rich is the architect for this, for this house, so they have, the, like my client, Mr. Reese and the Cavadas have a good relationship. But we did produce a letter, just so you know, that an easement will be agreeable. We just need to get it drafted up. Other than that, the plan is only too straightforward. It's a home with a right hand driveway and stormwater to the, to the rear. We do need there's a couple waivers we have, like we have a lot, most of our plans, just a few waivers, they're listed on Sheet One, I can go through those if you like. And we do need a conditional use for that, that sewer, sewer connection. And the reason we need that is to disturb those steep slopes to allow the sewer connection, which the ordinance permits per conditionally, by conditional use. So tonight, we were looking for you know, your, your review of this plan and and really, you know, would be nice to have two recommendations for the conditional use as well as the plan itself.
Let me, I got a question for you, for somebody. We got two things here regarding Seventeenth Spring Road. The, the plan itself couldn't be approved without knowing, and I'm sure you want the conditional use, right? That's only to cross the steep slopes with sewer.
Right.
Plan were approved from a development standpoint, and then down the road, the conditional use wasn't. And I'm not saying that I'm headed in that direction. So the plan could be approved, then you could do on lot sewage, right?
Yeah, I mean legally, conditional uses have to be approved. It's just that if the township didn't want them for whatever reason, and I don't see why they wouldn't here, but if they didn't, the township would put a condition on there that would be rather onerous. I mean, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly or not, if Mr. McGory's here could weigh in. That's true.
I guess he didn't hear you. So
Have you filed conditional use yet?
Yes.
So they're both pending in the township. We just would approve them concurrently. We would give final plan approval the same night we give the conditional use approval.
The hearing is scheduled for July eighth at the moment. Zach said things are fluid, but, you know, it is scheduled, I think.
Yeah, I can, I can clarify a little bit. I think what the intent was, you know, you had provided an extension previously to sort of carry us through these last couple of months. Since this was a relatively, is relatively simple and straightforward, obviously, it's still subject to review, but we could have the hearing at the July board meeting on the eighth. And then the decision could be issued. You know, at that meeting, they could consider the conditional use application, do the hearing, review the subdivision, and if so inclined, authorize this later draft a resolution. And then the following month's meeting in August, both in theory could have a decision rendered, so. I don't think.
Is the conditional use advertised yet, Zach?
Yes.
The conditional use is advertised for July eighth?
Yeah, it ran this, this morning and it'll run on the July first.
All right, well, why don't you, why don't you time it where he does the conditional use and the presentation on July eighth? Have the board just do a verbal vote, because this is such a simple conditional use. They can do a verbal vote with the written decision coming down in August. And at the same time, the plan approval is, the resolution will be signed in August.
That was my thinking as well, yeah. So Jack, just to that point, and something I forgot to mention earlier when we, when we talked, I think the, currently, the extensions for each of these goes to the end of July. In order to kind of do that, that we'll call that double move, we would need an extension on the land development to the end of August.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I can send that out tomorrow.
Yeah, and it's, it's a very simple conditional use. I, I would assume my board would have no problem just taking verbal action on it the night you present it.
Yeah, I was going to actually present this one. If you think it's okay, Mr. McGory, that I just present this without an attorney. You think that's?
No, not, it's not okay. Any, any conditional use is a judicial proceeding, has to involve an attorney or the client himself.
That's why I wanted to ask you. Well, okay. Well, the client itself was going to be there as well.
If he, if he just presents everything himself, that's fine, but he can, if you're going to be calling witnesses or or asking questions, then you're going to need an attorney. It's a judicial proceeding.
Right, okay. I just, I wanted, that's why I wanted to run that by you.
I can be there, Jack.
Okay.
Jack, this is Darryl. Did you speak with Dave about the infiltration bed?
Yes.
Okay, to, to increase the size of that, the footprint to reduce the, the loading ratio?
Yes, that is, that is relative, I mean, that's straightforward, and usually we have them flatter than that, so we were going to double the size of.
Yeah, I, I mean, as long as we see that on the revised plan prior to the eighth.
Yep, definitely.
Does anybody have any specific questions about the, the conditional use or the subdivision plan? Is, is there anything that you'd like people to go over?
The only thing I would like to know is when you are going up the road from Warren Avenue, this house is on the left, correct?
No. No, it's on the right.
On the right?
Yeah.
The second house on the right.
If you could show Sheet One. Yeah, exactly, exactly, Peter. If you want, if you could show Sheet One, Zach, you could see it better. It's near that sharp corner. I don't know if you can zoom in or one of the beds is a good spot for it, but yeah, there, that right there. You're coming up Warren. You'd make a sharp right, and then it's on the right.
So you can't really physically see it from Warren Avenue if you're driving on Warren?
No, I don't think so, no, there are too many trees.
Too steep slope and certainly too many.
Bottom of the steep slopes?
Pardon me?
That's at the bottom of the steep slopes that goes up to Cavada's house.
Right, yeah, these, so these houses are up high in the sewer, the connection is down, obviously, you know, lower elevation, but down at the bottom. Twenty, thirty feet up from that, from that stream down there.
Okay. Thanks.
Thirty six feet change.
It's up.
Yeah, I mean, it's a nice spot.
It is.
It won't be crossing the stream, just to clarify, the sanitary sewer is on the property side of the stream, so they'll be able to, let's say, go down the slope. Pretty considerable slope, but it's, the sewer line's already back there. They'll be connecting into something that's, you know, well established, already serves a number of properties in that area.
I, I have a question. It's Kavanaugh, Dave Kavanaugh's letter, he's concerned about the trees. Is, is this, it was only, it was dated June sixteenth. Has there been any more resolution to his concerns?
Yes, I, we got that email, yeah, on the sixteenth. I actually emailed, because I talked to Zach earlier today, and I emailed Zach some calculations. I replied back to him saying we would address those, add more street trees per his comments. The third item that were the, you know, the twenty percent you're allowed to remove, I did a calculation to show that actually the amount we're removing is twenty percent of the woodland. So that third one can be addressed just by, just noting that. But I, I did calculate that, and the third one can, you know, go away. But the first two, we would, we'll, we'll add more street trees than we already had. They already showed a couple of street trees. Yeah, he asked for more, basically.
Did you include the disturbed trees that's not on its property that are, that, that, it's going to be difficult to run the sewer line, and I know it's not big in itself, but there's going to be a some damage to the trees, even if you try to keep them alive going down to the existing line.
Yeah, the trees that go down that existing line, that area are smaller because it's, it's more dense in that area. They're smaller trees. So the idea is we're going to be, you're going to be field fitting that to only to remove the few, fewest number of trees as you can to get through there. But the trees in that area are not as mature.
Okay.
So, you know, we're going to rely on the, you know, contractor to field fit that, which is a good thing because, you know.
Well, that's not a trivial issue, because if a number of trees die, I think we all know this. If you think about it, you, the angle of repose of the soil changes and you can have sloughing and rip the sewer open and then in the creek it goes.
Yeah, it, it's a narrow trench. It's only a few feet deep, you know, it's only for a lateral, so it's not a main.
Okay.
So that's what's good. I really don't see a whole lot of disturbance for that. I mean, we're showing it wider than it needs to be. It's just typical, you know, you have to show it, but there's no way the actual disturbance is going to be that wide. It'd only be a few feet wide to get the trench in.
It's not a big tube, right?
No, it's, I think we show it as a four inch maybe. It's not, yeah, it's not a main. So it's a typical lateral.
It, it, hey, Jack, it's interesting that you got the two lines going separately with their own separate tie-ins. If you were to combine them, it seems like it would make a whole hell of a lot of sense, but then would you have to be calling that a main?
I agree, yeah, I agree with you. It would make sense. It's just, this is how the regs work. You know, the regulations are that, you know, the idea comes down to maintenance. When somebody's got a problem, well, who's paying for it? Well, who, who flushed the toilet that caused the problem? And then you have an argument between two neighbors. Yeah, so it, it prevents, I guess, future arguments. Otherwise, that's where, that's where my mind went when I first looked at this, and I'm like, oh, yeah, you can't do that.
Right, so you'll dig one trench and lay the twos side by side like a foot apart?
I think they had to be more than a, for maintenance, I might, I'm going to have to verify with shop, but we, we have them, I think they need to be probably like four to five feet apart, perhaps. Just because you don't want them, you have to maintain them.
It's interesting.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I, it's just, yeah, okay, all right, that's fine, whatever, I want to get into the engineering.
There'll be clean outs marking where they are. You'll, you'll see a clean out wherever.
Right.
But it's better than a septic right now. The septic in the existing house, you know, they only have a certain amount of time, and you can see all the slopes, there's not a lot of space to put a new one. And, you know, the sewer's right there, so it was great to have that.
Right, okay.
Speaking of the slopes, Jack, I've driven by that property quite a few times, and this is Peter speaking, Jack.
Yep.
The back of the property seems like it's just back, a lot of backfill soil to like kind of extend the property. How is that accurate?
What's that? The, I guess that's what I understand, the backfill, what?
Facing the house to the right rear of the house, there seems like a, like a manmade plateau.
It is, you might be, like, my clients, I think Mr., as far as I know, Mr. Cavada had probably, probably filled some of that over the years, like years ago. Because he owned all of this. So, yeah, some of these slopes are manmade. You know, to level off the property. I think that was done years ago.
Is that the property we're looking to build on, where that, it's kind of, that plateau is built up?
Yeah, I think some of that area was, was filled upon, perhaps. I mean, you know, our, our soil testing was, you know, that didn't reveal that necessarily. But, you know, who knows how many, you know, years ago, things, things could have been filled there.
With that in mind, it makes me a little concerned of potential for stuff washing away as it's been built up. I just, making, making sure there's enough plantings kind of hold everything together.
Well.
Got to skimp on
Right.
that landscaping as Lev kind of indicates.
Yeah, that, the, the entire slope area is vegetated with trees heavily. And we're not, you know, we're proposing to preserve all of it except for the potential laterals. There's no tree removal in that area at all, because that, that, the proposed tree line matches the line that's there now. The only trees that'd be taken out is the area for the driveway, you know, where you come in on the right side of the property. But all those sloped areas aren't to be touched, and, you know, for obvious reasons too, they're sloped areas.
Who owns the, this is an aside kind of question, but who owns the land from the cartway of Warren Avenue up to wherever the, the lot line is? Is that, some of that public?
It's, it's unopened. It's it's unopened. It's in other words, it's not public yet. The township could take dedication. But right now, right now, it's Mr. Cavada.
Are you being the area from Spring Road? This this area here that's?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that whole, quite frankly, that whole Warren Avenue corridor is real vulnerable in extreme weather to. You know, tree toppling and land sloughing and all kinds of problems there. Right now, I I don't see that this. Proposal tips it toward that at all, but it's just. You know, what happens down the road when those trees get bigger and start falling and things?
Yeah, that that's kind of the impetus of my question is we're adding some. Purvis, we're gonna have some different runoffs on these steep slopes and. It is an area that's. Very subject to, like John said, coughing and. The dynamics that come from too much rain that we've seemed to consistently get year to year.
Right. The stormwater system we have is set to reduce the flows from what's there now. When we even get a fair amount of offsite flow from Mr. Cavada's site into our stormwater, so I would think it's not gonna get worse.
That certainly that certainly would help.
Yeah, we're 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 taking water that's right now running freely down the hill. Right, Mr., you can see the from the right side of the plan, that all she flows, that all flows through the property and then down the hill, and it's gonna be. Being managed now like it wasn't before. So I I see an improvement there, but the main thing is that slope is well established and covered in trees and set to remain that way, except for that sewer connection.
Well, that's what I was driving at after Peter started with his questioning is. How do we make sure those don't get cleared? Or is that even a worthy goal?
I mean, it's outside of our limited disturbance. When we go to go to construction, we we state the limited disturbance, what's permitted to be disturbed. So, I mean, the township is has all all the rights to enforce that.
Okay. It's that's not trivial. Yes, it's good. Yeah, when I first moved here in the early nineties, I was driving down Warren Avenue, and a giant branch. Came off a tree and crushed the roof of my car. Right down the middle and stopped right by my shoulder. So it still has my attention there.
I can understand that.
Okay, are there any other additional questions about this application? And it looks like we have, I guess, they're also under the conditional use, so we have to talk about it again, Joe. We can't. This is two separate discussions, I'm assuming.
Well, I think you just had the same discussion, just separate motions.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
So that being said, is there anybody who would like to make a motion?
Can I just chime in one sec? I would just.
Sure.
Just wanna, again, before the motion's made, so I don't have to interrupt somebody else. I would just say any motion should be subject to compliance with the outstanding. Comments in the review letters. And of course, any other aspects you want to add, but that's just.
And the waivers, and the waivers we have noted on sheet one there, which are just make sure they're incorporated.
I can I can go back to sheet one, just that that's handy.
Oh, there you go. Okay. Now, is there anyone who would like to make a motion? So we have the waiver up on the screen?
We have more than one waiver up here.
Waivers?
Yeah.
You know, it's interesting, it's. Daryl's review. Letter only talks about one waiver under the general. Comments. And that was the subdivision and land development. Why is it? Why have we got three? We have four on the plan. We have one being spoken about on Daryl's. Am I missing something?
Jeff, if you look in the under stormwater, the stormwater section of my June seventeen letter.
Okay.
There's a couple of requests there that they waivers that they should have requested. You know, with justification. But I'm I'm fine with each of the four waivers requested.
Yeah, I see that, like, for example, item number ten under stormwater, you. You said that waiver request letter with justification, okay?
Right.
Yeah, and with regard to that number ten, as as Daryl, I think, and Jack mentioned earlier. They that one about the loading ratios, number ten. They've spoken about some ways to reduce that. So like a loading ratio essentially is the area of land that that is being treated by a stormwater feature. That's by about as basic as it gets and may not even be correct, but. They're they're gonna work to increase the size of that basin essentially to shrink that. The fact that that loading ratio is higher than what is normally recommended by the B and P manual. So they'll they'll be working with Daryl to kind of reduce that request, I guess you would say, from what is already shown on the the current plan.
That's correct, although I'm guessing he will not be able to get it down to the the guidance from the B and P manual would probably still be above that. That's we'll still need to waiver.
Right.
But he'll reduce that that loading ratio from what it is today.
Yes, in half.
Okay. Well, we we got this thing labeled preliminary final. It seems to me like we're. Ready to. Be final contingent upon the review letters and granting of the waivers.
That's correct, and it would be, it would it would actually probably need to be conditioned upon. The conditional use, because otherwise they wouldn't have sewer. They haven't shown like a. A backup, so that I would think that would need to be part of the motion. Yeah, this was submitted as a combined preliminary final, just because it's it's a minor plan that our ordinance does allow for that.
Well, that's what that's why I opened up the entire conversation with. Are we approving this condition upon the conditional use, which? Still seems like it's kind of separate, but the way the plan is drawn, they would have to have the conditional use.
Yeah, it's a little chicken and the egg, admittedly, not to use the cliche, but I I think you're right. I mean, technically, they don't. Divide the land, but they wouldn't be able to to build the home until they showed some sort of.
Well, I I would I would recommend to my board when they get it that they don't approve. Land development without the approval of the conditional use. And Jack, for for your benefit, Jack, when you present, when when your attorney presents the conditional use on July eighth. It should be a recorded easement at that point. Because. We'd have to leave the hearing open then and can't vote that night if we don't have a recorded easement.
Okay. Okay, yeah, and I think normally, we would have had the conditional use done at first, if we applied to that first. But I think that the Corona kind of sandwiched things together is what ended up happening here.
That's fine. We can we can accommodate it. So by the time by the time my board votes on it, the conditional use will have been granted.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Where they won't where they won't vote on it.
Right, okay.
Well.
So we're gonna make two separate motions tonight. You're gonna go to the Board of Supervisors and. You you will get a vote? You won't, because you're.
For the plan, he has to get the conditional use approval. And as long as he gets an easement that's in recordable form or actually recorded. Then he'll most likely get the favorable vote for the conditional use. Then the board take action on the preliminary slash final plan.
Okay.
But they are not gonna, my board isn't gonna vote. On a plan that doesn't have a provision for sewer, or without the easement, there's no provision for sewer.
Okay.
So. So there it's gonna be. That you won't ever be stuck with a land development approval without the conditional use.
Well, it would just make a contingent upon the conditional use being granted.
Right.
Your most your motion can be contingent on the conditional use. But what I'm gonna advise, what I'm gonna advise the Board of Supervisors to do is to not vote until the conditional use is voted on.
Right, that's their issue.
Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion. Are you ready to listen to a motion?
Sure.
All right, I'll make a motion, the Board of Supervisors to. Approve the preliminary final subdivision plan for seventeen Spring Road. Item number two on our minutes here, and Brittany can fill in the rest of the verbiage on item number two. Subject to compliance to the review letters, specifically the latest from Arrow Engineering, June seventeenth, and any other township. Review letters, also granting. Or suggesting that the waivers on sheet number one, the four waivers. Are approved as well. We. Recommend that. Conditioned upon. The approval, the granting of the conditional use. For the same property for the sanitary sewer line. Which we understand. Will need to be recorded.
Conditional use for the disturbance of very steep slopes.
That's correct, for the sanitary sewer line.
Okay, do we have a second? Anyone second?
I will second it. John.
One Lommer's second. All those in favor? Wave.
Hi.
Hello?
Hi.
Zach, we can't see everybody. Can we see everybody?
I can't see Peter.
Todd's camera's on.
There you go. Okay, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Hello?
Hi.
Okay, opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jack. See ya.
It was great seeing everyone again.
We have to talk about the conditional use. Does Jack want to hang out so we can put that in? We we have to make a recommendation.
Yeah, all you need is a motion for the conditional use.
Yeah, I'll I'll make a motion for the approval of the conditional use. So item number three. For the.
I'll second. I'll second.
Todd, Azusa's second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let me get the door for you, Jack.
They helped me. All right, see you, Jack.
Hey, you want me to kick him out? I can kick him out.
Oh, come on, you guys are tough.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay.
I guess that's it.
Public comment.
Oh, okay. Do you have any public comments? We haven't received anything in our mailbox. Okay, I guess nobody's, we're just not that exciting. They come in.
Yeah, according to the live stream, there's three people watching.
Oh, okay. Any of them have any questions? Our mailbox is open.
Going once. Going twice.
I, John has a question here. I've not done a Zoom meeting at this scale before, just birthday parties and stuff. It sounds like to me what happens is when someone begins speaking, it toggles up. Everyone gets to see their picture. But I've seen other uses of it where everyone's face is visible if there's not too many of us. Am I seeing this right?
Mine is not what you explained. I got everybody up here the whole time.
John, John, if you kind of hover over your screen. Just in the top right corner, you'll see something that says speaker view. You can click that and you can go to a gallery view where you can see everyone's face, including mine.
Speaker view?
That's right.
Hey, Deb, I think you'll agree, this was the most polite meeting we've ever had.
I'm thrilled to have not everyone talking over each other.
This really forces you to wait your turn.
The one thing I'll say for if we were to do this in July, and we'll we'll keep revisiting this on a monthly basis, I suppose. I think I might suggest to the applicants to just kind of do a little bit more of like a dog and pony show, like a presentation, so there's not. So not having to ask as many questions to pull information out, kind of go, maybe go through the review letters, kind of go give an overview, so. Just, you know, lessons learned, we'll we'll make adjustments if we need to, and but that would be my one suggestion.
Yeah, it's it seems like the Zoom environment gives them an opportunity to be a little more laxed in every way, so.
Yeah, yeah, so.
But I think. Yeah, but the Zoom Zoom is only effective as long as the governor's orders in effect. And that's being challenged right now. So you may lose your Zoom in July.
Wait a minute, say that again, Joe.
You may lose your Zoom in July. The Zoom, the 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 virtual meetings are only legal as long as the governor's order is in effect. And the governor's being challenged by the General Assembly.
So then we're.
Back to regular meetings.
That's right, the meetings. Let's hope we can get to the point where we can have regular meetings.
We have to.
You hear us all trying to speak with masks on.
Well, I forget, I don't want the mask either. I want to get to the point where we don't need them.
Yeah.
Someday.
Yeah, I know. All right, was there anything else to discuss before we adjourn?
I like all Daryl's plans. I like those.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just like a regular meeting, there's a little bit of. Discussion afterward, to be sure that all three people at home are thoroughly enjoying this.
It's okay.
Hello, East Whiteland residents. Thanks for showing up.
All right, take care.
Thanks, everyone. Nice job. We'll revisit next month.
Take care.
See you next month.
All right.
The next.
Thanks. Bye.